ホームページですね。はい。持ってるんですかね。今、持ってきて。はい。イエス様の皆を褒めておられます。いいですか？ アレリア。お祈りをいたします。愛する天のお父様。
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for you gathered us here and the 26 martyrs praise you and here on the cross they went to up to heaven. Please, and the grace of listening to your words, we hope. Thank you Lord, to receive your words enough, we pray. And at the end time, we accomplish our works, your works. Please give us the words. Thank you for the wonderful time here. We expect to you to have the worship here to you. In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen. Praise the Lord with your big hands. Thank you. Now we are having the time worship. The mission given to me would be accomplish those as long as my life may keep choosing your willingness and obey to you. When I go up to heaven, let me sow the seed of salvation. I pray to you Lord. Receive the light of eternal agapal love and keep obeying to you until my life, as long as my life, I'll sing to you. Oh God's love, the grace to receive your light of love and continue, keep believing you and obey to you until I let me accomplish the mission, our Lord. Please give me the guidance. Thank you Lord, your blessing and from the far places and the near close people are coming here and in the name of Jesus, thank to the Lord. Amen. Thank you for the present songs and worship time. Now we're having the special time, special songs by peace. Thanks to the Lord. This is peace. I want to sing about heaven. Heaven and the earth together long for you and worship, giving thanks and praise songs will filled with here. Heaven and the earth exceeding them. Look up to God's glory before you get down on knees and praise your name. Raise up the clean hands and give thanks to you. I worship you from my heart, but I'm wrong. The power is inside of me. The great reward of the yard is here, going through the valley of tears. Everything will change into the wonderful thing. Oh my soul, in your yard, missing and longing for the place, just like this here. Your turn. I sing to you. And here. In the yard. Our Lord. Seeding the world. Together and it sounds eternal. 完成します。
The Heavenly Father, briefly I gave a message Holy Spirit that you speak and manifestation, the spirit, God's word is mentioned strongly. I could mention, but I am supported to mention with belief in the name of Jesus, I pray amen. Martyrs and Mark 8:34 stated with prayer with scripture. So three martyrs, I just want to share. One of them is today, today is the 6th and the 5th is the Sunday. Every year we gather together, have hold a meeting. And considering the 26 saints are martyrs, we don't just consider, we just like meditate or something? No, it doesn't mean so. What? Why? Because they are still alive. Yeah, I understand in my mind, but it was the first things I received. They are alive. They are living. Yeah, sure. And their body had already torn out, but still in heaven, they are alive. The spirit is alive. The time of resurrection, when Jesus come back, they also receive the resurrected body, they come back. If we are in the heaven, we come back together and so we live together, we together with them forever in heaven. They are, they didn't dead and they still alive and they are singing praises together with us. They are alive. Second one is, they were so glad to choose the cross of crucifixion. And Cook Cork, the martyrs, I don't explain precisely 24, and they are not included in the name list of 24. They themselves chose. And still there are several times they could refuse to be martyred, but they didn't. With gratitude, they chose. Now, when I consider so, in the heaven, they are alive. No deaths, no tears, no mourns, no sins. I love. So that place, they are alive there. They, it's not just hope, not just confirmation. And since they were on the earth and heaven was real and they are living there. So for you, and it's heaven and for real, real or hope, heaven is real. And Christians don't die, just we are transformed to heaven. So they are living in heaven. They knew the heaven is real, even in the deaths before them because heaven was real. So they didn't fear. For in this end hour, we are living. And when the heaven become real for me and our way of living changed. And they are singing praises in heaven. When our beloved one died, we had a heart, we heart especially. And people, we spent a time together if we tear out and we can't deny. But people died in 26 saints martyrs, when considering that, absolutely, they became to the very happy place because happier place, the best place than they lived on the earth. When we consider them, they went the best place. But for them, the heaven, there are things they cannot do, what it is. And not able to share testimony, not able to preach good news. 24 and many martyrs, when we research and many martyrs in the world, but in the country not far from Japan, it's like a free religion, but it's very, and difficult. It's okay, they just believe. If they share anybody, they are arrested. If they believe, that's okay. If they please the young and they were arrested, they might be killed. So 26 saints martyrs, if they didn't share anything, so they just believe they were not killed. But pleased poor Mickey. And I went there, it's a very great presence. I could felt so much. I was so impressed watching and worship service. And they were in the Swiss and German team. And some are singing praises, some are preaching gospel. So like unifying them and they were preaching gospel. And so here, the deaths and everything and take for granted. And if they didn't obey, they were not killed. But they didn't obey. And they want to preach good news. They didn't care they would be killed. And the third key, and then the fact they were entrusted, they already gave the button to us. So they ask us to preach good news because we hear the good news by people who came from all over the world. Then for world, for this country, they wish, they want us to preach gospel in this end hour. The preaching gospel, if we are killed and we are martyred and the heaven, the crown and the waiting us to come to the heaven. When I was young, if I died and God, if God, I want, if I could die the way that God admit as a martyrdom, it is when the battling conflict are so severe for me, I almost forget, but I remember. So I died and my life on the earth is end, but I don't die. I lived with God forever preaching gospel. They are wish, they are wishing. So button we receive is preaching gospel in the world in this end hours. So we have never seen before. That's the manifestation signs wonders for the preaching gospel in the world. So they are wishing us to do. I'm going to end soon. So some who agree. But we don't have such a power to do. When I was young and I said, I tried to let me do, but right now I know, but I cannot. But last year, the message we received, please be despair. I was so glad to hear that because I would stand in the end of despair if we do. The God let us open because we desire God's power and the work, the power, power is to perform. And since the almost 40 years since our church started, believing the revival, we are walked and I'm powerless, but I know. Why? I'm so sinful. I'm so sad to consider how I am. Even I am, but if I come to Christ, we receive the blessing and by God's grace, it's very big blessing. Don't you think so? 24 Book of Luke and I said, and they were here, they feared, they were afraid. They were hold fast to the Lord. When we read chapter 24 Book of Luke and the disciples blessed and Jesus ascended to heaven and they come back to the city and then with gratitude. And then chapter 24 of Luke continued the book of Acts. And they, their faith powerless, they were so glad, they were so pleased. They were singing praises at that time and from the day of Pentecost, Holy Spirit came down. With gratitude. 神ご自身を見たら参拝しかない。神様を見たら喜ぶしかない。神様を見たら喜ぶしかない。あの十字架で。We are loved by the cross. We are loved by the cross. When we watch God, only thing we can do to be glad when we do and being filled with Holy Spirit and we are going to preach gospel in the world. Now the fulfillment of prophecy given to us in the beginning and start to take place. So through the God who is walking through us, we want to expect the Holy Spirit, we want to expect God. So in this end hours, God has special purpose for this and the church group and we are, we want to expect God who performed through our church group, following worship service. And please increase your grace and spreading out of the Holy Spirit in Jesus' name. Amen. Now continuing. And now the time of special song. We are asking the gifts. And now the time of special song, we are asking the gifts. Gifts. God is love, that love is our all, we want to sing praises.
God is loveのloveの愛っていう意味を込めてですね、一緒に片手じゃなくてぜひ両手でエルマーク作って盛り上がっていただきたいと思います。いきます。God is love!
We want to sing praises again and we want to welcome Pastor Paul Akimoto to preach today. If we could be stand up and then the lyrics and the iPhone, you can follow in the, finally give thanks. Behold, I make everything new.
感謝しようから。
Heavenly hometown. Looking for heaven. We serve the Lord, we joy. With the place we live. We long for heaven. We serve the Lord, joy. Any other home. The Lord's law in heaven. Never change. Heavenly reward. Tears in eyes. We take away. Pray the Lord, pray the Lord, pray the Lord. Jehovah's name in heaven. It's a true, never leave. Jehovah's name in heaven. Sing praises, sing praises, sing praises to the Lord. Make a way, time already advancing. In 21st century, we choose use 26th century martyrs from beginning and Japanese martyrs and the testimony of them just broadcast. And that's God's will, furthermore, through that. And let me advance my reading. 26th century martyrs and various and under the Japanese persecution ages, the testimony through the film, through voice, audio and broadcast in the world, everything work for good. And performance got work, you find, you see. 21st century is the truth. And under persecution and the face in Japan, when you broadcast and connection with the people in the world through SNS and the relationship is opened. This is God, God has a purpose for, a plan for that. Number forty-five, forty-one, the song number forty-one. Behold, the Lord will make all things new. Which one, we sing on the throne. Forever, dwell forever. Mioshiwa. Dear heaven father, thank you for the word of prophecy. Thank you for brief message, two special songs, thank you. Furthermore, we are through the scripture, we are going to learn. Living God profoundly give us message and guide us in Jesus' name, amen. And Pastor Paul Akimoto, the message from Tokyo Interfaith Church. Expecting the Lord shall welcome him. This is number, chapter one Book of Acts. 今日はこの箇所を中心にですね、The first time when I came here. そしてですね、主に語りかけを受けたんですね。非常に大きな祝福であり、また同時にですね、神様の大きな語りかけが。It's a origin of the face in Japan. and they were killed if they don't, if they don't abandon faith. But they could keep their faith to the end. It was great testimony of God. They had a special and opinion, what it is. God has got work. Father in God, it's a real value. Someone sacrificed self. It's not, they didn't sacrifice themselves, it is. They chose the good things, better things, good things. They receive eternal life because they were martyred. Believing the cross, they receive eternal life as a result, they were murdered. Now they are in heaven. Then furthermore, in heaven, they are singing praises to God. Or they might know this meeting, they were watching us. The best thing they received. Therefore. It is and the natural, it is natural. The things coming from God, we know this is the best, we know that. And daily life, we experience Bible say, what it is. Compare in the wonderfulness, we know God and everything on the earth and faces. And the dust, and what they chose was the best. So you, what you choose is best. So, we are for God. And we belong to heaven. Our sicknesses belong to heaven, we receive eternal life and eternal God's blessing we receive. Many problems, a lot difficulties, a lot the same. And the situation, we might stand on the same situation, but. We are the best one. We are filled with eternity. So the pastor Mickey, pastor Sugar, going to be with the Lord before we, before us. They are focused on this meeting. Pastor O, he went and recently, he wonder how the wife is, how daughter is. He was watching with interest. So keep it in mind. And the same time, 26th centuryの and laymen, and they were murdered. And my first session, God's glory, they were asking. And preaching gospel. They made decision. And my first session, God's wonderful glory, they, they played. Everyone. And so, and my ear, the Christian ear, the long, 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 I feel one. What I felt, the greatness of the manifestation, God's glory, I experienced. Why such things took place, why these things take place, why that thing take place? And I experienced after that, one after another, everything worked for my good, I experienced. Then furthermore, in the beginning, when I started to new God, new God. One year I did my best effort so much, but second year I give up. And I thought, I started year, I abandoned faith. And I thought, I start year, I abandoned faith.
あの神を教えてたらそこが。
And the teaching of God is the best, I believe. But no. And his teaching is very deep, filled with God, filled with, and grace, so.
どんどん神さんの。
So more and more and more.
素晴らしさをより深く。
Wonderfulness of God more deeply, I experienced. So, and the wonderfulness of God more deeply, more deeply, you experience, I feel so. This year, the better, more. And there are many people who know more than you knew. And some say, the same lasts a few years, but everyone absolutely it changed. Because God's grace, God's teaching are there.
で我々はね、ますます深く。
More deeply, the God's glory, the manifestation, the manifestation blessing, we experience.
こういうふうに思っていただきたい。
So I ask you to do, to think so. In the same time, God, that glory, God entrusted to us.
その栄光を表してください。
So please manifest.
語ってください。
Please utter. You preach.
こういうふうに思います。
And I ask you to do so. And I had, I joined the training.
ノンソクの学びっていうのがあった。
And the four roads, the learning of four roads.
そこで問題集のようにやったんですが。
I just did like a textbook.
キリストを知ってどう人生が変わりました。
And how our life changed believing Jesus, then it was bitter.
それ見ながら臭い問題にならなと思ったんですね。
And I thought very nasty.
素晴らしい人生に変わりましたっていう。
Because wonderful life. And so I can't help but write.
そしてですね、
And my life became so wonderful. And I wrote, my life became wonderful.
素晴らしい人生に変わったってことはよく分かったな。
I didn't understand and so well.
まあそう書くもんだとは。
I thought I need to write, so, but actually, my life. And when I'm spending my life, what I felt.
本当に素晴らしい。
Really, really, it was so great.
本当に目覚めに。
It is, and filled with grace.
本当に力。
Really, it is filled with power.
これを。
And I feel so, I felt so.
それはね、日々感じて。
Every day, every day, I feel so.
皆がそれを感じておられる方は多いです。
I know, many of you feel so.
そうじゃなくてね、ちょっと迷い気味の方方もいらっしゃると思います。
Some might, and.
しかし、それをね。
Might not able to agree, but.
さらに主に近づき。
You feel, you approach more close to God, you see, you are entrusted to it's God, and God's power. One pastor. I had a contact.
何を言ってくれたのかっていう。
What his pastor said.
外国の有名な予言者が。
Very famous prophet in overseas. That person or prophesied.
何を予言したのかっていう。
What prophesied.
えーとね、二十億人救われた。
Two thousand million people are saved. When I heard that testimony, I thought it was so great.
私ね、えーと二十億人。
And two thousand million people will be saved. I thought, I agreed.
だからね、聞いてきたんですね。
Then, I was asked, how many? My tutor said, I answered.
マリンさんが言ったこと。
My tutor said, I just remember. One million people are saved through one person. The word, my tutor said, deeply, I remember.
特殊な形で。
And in the special way. The Lord directed the things.
あの羽根町でも。
It's not encouraged, that not, and strengthening art, no.
いうことですね、この時マリンさんが言われた。
My tutor said so.
主に示されたこと。
And this was the things, the Lord directed him. If it is from God, it will be done, it will be fulfilled.
どいつだったか、スイスだったか忘れない。
Switzerland, Germany, I don't remember which.
回数の人に質問したんですね。
I make a question to the one.
なんで質問したのかっていう。
What it is.
何を言われたんですか？
I was told. And I never, and board the airplane until the age thirty seven. Then when I came to Nagasaki, twenty six century martyrs, on the way back home. And you board the flight and times, you never count, countless. And then I asked, how many times I bought? And church member, I didn't ask them to answer, fifty, so other members knew. And so my church member knew, so I didn't ask them, not answer. But some said fifty, one hundred, some hundreds, but more than two thousand, I can't account. It's very amazing. Because I was told, you bought the airplane from now, countless number, and it is true, now, right now. Even when I never been overseas, you oversee, you go overseas, countless numbers.
そしてね、数え切れて、多分八十。
I'm count, uh, maybe around eighty from now, and I'm going, so.
その時に。
At that time.
神の行ける働き。
And God's living work, God's wonderfulness, the grace.
深くその中で。
More deeply in that part, we experience, I experience, then.
予言者の話を教えてくれた。
The word of prophecy, the person who share, the person.
百万人の方々。
And the reason, and my tutor said, one million people are saved through one person. And the white horse in the Book of Revelation, it's an image, it's Jesus Christ, the work of the Bible after that.
数え切れない。
Countless. And the people who praise God.
これはね、何を表して。
What does it mean?
これはですね。
This is.
素晴らしい救いの技が。
And the great number of people are saved, it says so. Clearly, I just remember, what it is.
大変な数の人々が。
And the great number of people saved, that believed in God, such time come with the persecution.
技がやってくる。
And such work, God's work comes.
ちょっと感じた。
I feel so. Concretely. Twenty first century. One of them, one things started, Reinhold Bonke.
朝陽美とか。
Pastor Choyongi.
ちょっとレベルの超えた器が出てきた。
And God's vessel come out. It's very extraordinary level.
七十万人教。
And seven hundred.
ナニオズボンケ。
Thousand people.
その集会の。
And congregation Reinhold Bonke, the number of people who attended, so great.
ハレルヤとかなんか言ってたんですね。
And the people said, hallelujah, by Holy Spirit, everyone blown out.
こんなこと。
And I thought, what, what? And I couldn't believe such thing taking place. It's very powerful one.
すごい恵みですね。
And they great powerful, it's a grace. Watching that, one thing I felt.
何を感じたのか。
What I felt.
かつてこんなことがあった。
Once before, it took place. Such vessel took place and come out. Actually, the performance, God's work advanced. Then same time, such vessel.
限られた器。
It's just limited number, I thought.
でもね。
But. My opinion changed.
どう変わって。
How changed?
まあ聖書にはありますね。
And sit one, and the pastor, Bible says.
私を信じる者は。
Those who believe me, perform the work I do, and the more bigger work they do. Christ said, those who believe in Christ, they perform the work. And Christ perform, it's wonderful work they do, or more bigger, uh, bigger work they do. And because they do perform more bigger work. When we see the Reinhold Bonke, Pastor Choyongi, and we agree. Because they perform the work Christ performed, and the bigger work.
その見事な状況がですね。
They perform in the fulfillment that's scripture in the Bible, and it come out, it shown. But, wait a minute, I felt.
それどうして感じたの？
How I felt?
その見事はね。
That scripture.
ごく特殊な人にそれが現れる。
And, don't you think it says, that things come out only for limited people? It doesn't say such things come out or shown in the limited person. Because those who believe in me, it's very generous thing. Because everyone, you believe in Jesus. Because if you don't believe, you don't come here. Even this cold weather, and you can't sleep, falling snow. And then, just a place you are obligated to listen or hear message. Because busy day, they're spending time, spending money, I don't think you come.
信じてるんですよ皆さん。
Because you believe.
信じてるんですよ。
You believe.
信じてるんですよ。
If you, you believe.
私は信じる。
I believe.
その時にね。
Then.
この見事は。
And this scripture.
私たちを通した。
Through us. And God showed, manifestation, God's work, and miracles.
感じ始めた。
I felt, I feel. In the same way, me.
ときどき奇跡が。
Sometimes, and miracles taking place through me.
本にも書いてあるんですけどね。
And the books say so, the many performance of God's work come out. But I feel so, a little bit.
ちょっと。
A little bit.
皆さんの中でいろんな神のさんの。
In you, and.
見た人ちょっと。
And would you raise a hand, you've seen the performance, God's work, many people seen. If you don't see, don't worry, come to God, you see.
もっと素晴らしい会社の栄光。
More, and the wonderful, and the glory you see, the blessing you see. For example, and the brain in.
国立の大学に。
In damage, and he was healed, graduated from the National University. And my wife in schizophrenia, he was there, she was there, but many things fulfillment come.
まさに主が。
And fulfilled, one and after, God is really alive, you experience, I experience.
しかしね、皆さん思いませんか？
Don't you think?
もっと。
More.
もっとってなね。
More, what does it mean more?
余ってもとんめてんじゃなくて。
No, just we are looking for. And the more, more stronger work should be, should take place. The glory should be performed more.
そしてですね。
Then, don't, do you believe?
そのことを言って。
The scripture says so.
私たちはですね、キリストの行う技を行い。
The work, the Christ performed, we do.
さらに大きな技を行い。
More bigger work we do.
じゃどうしたい？
What we should do?
どうした？
What we should do? Everyone, time is drawing near. I, I know, things start to take place.
さらに大きく。
And more, um, greater scale, and then start taking place, miracle take place in you.
リバイバルに満ち溢れてる教会のうち。
And the church, in church.
世界の。
リバイバルに満ち溢れてる教会のうち。Related to, and revival, great thing take place, great work take place.
そしてですね。
Then.
私はね、その。
So me.
私を信じる者は。
Everyone who believes in me, perform my work, bigger work, God's work.
これ約束だ。
That promise, I feel so.
約束っていうな。
The promise.
時が来た。
When time comes.
長寿。
It is fulfilled.
技が。
And it will be performed.
素晴らしい技が起こり始めます。
And the wonderful work is performed.
映画が現れ始めます。
And the glory will manifested, then.
信じるクリスチャンにおいて。
And the, through those who Christian believe.
主の時を待ち望んでいる私たちを通して。
Through us, waiting upon the manifestation, God's glory.
映画が現され。
To Christians.
数え切れないぐらいの人々はですね。
Countless people.
救われていき。
And the people are saved.
さらに再臨がやってくるのです。
Second coming's.
主の時はやってきます。
The.
主の時はやってきます。
The time of the Lord come.
主の時はやってきます。
The time of the Lord come.
そして私たちは何を望むのか？
What we ask.
主を待つのです。
So we wait upon the Lord.
主の働きが有る中でないのを待つのです。
We are.
映画が有る中でないのを待つのです。
God's work, God's glory.
ベニーくんの話を。
When I share the story of Benny, Benjamin, my son.
学校の先生にしました。
I told, I asked.
化教家なんかになったような方ですね。
And the teacher, and the principal.
横目でその話を聞いてみました。
And he was listening, and from, with the side eyes.
本当に起こるというですね。
And he said, I wish it will be fulfilled. And I thought, he doesn't believe, then, but you know, before us.
本当に。
Actually, really, it was, it took place, then. It is filled. And the Lord.
私たちを通してですね。
Through us, God, the Lord is going to start, take place.
耶稣を信じる者は。
Those who believe in Jesus, perform the work God does, more better, bigger work come out through us. We believe, I believe, I believe, I believe.
主の大きな見点がですね。
Then God's big, and the heart.
さらに大きな栄光がその中で現されてきます。
And images of that, more bigger glory is shown, I believe, I believe.
I believe. 反キースが勝利を取る前に。
Before Antichrist.
私はですね。
The victory.
神の豊かな勝利の。
Profound victory, manifestation, we see, manifestation glory.
奇跡を見ます。
Miracles we see.
多くの者たちが救われるのを見ます。
Many people are saved, we see.
天空に溢れる場外に溢れていくのを見ます。
In heaven, we see.
言葉が豊かに成就するのを見るので。
The world of the Lord will fulfilled, we see.
どうぞ皆さんね。
Everyone.
期待し。
Expecting.
信じて行きましょう。
Shall we believe? Let me pray, dear heaven father, each one of us, please work profoundly, please manifest your glory, please show your work, everyone, in the big.
不信を持っている方がいらっしゃる。
Unbelief.
何かえっと。
Some.
信じていた宗教があって。
Used to believe, the religion. You don't abandon, concretely, it is a problem, depend, abandon.
それを握っていることは大きな。
And holding that, and influence, and big disaster for you, so.
聞いた話で。
And the story you heard, and impacted you.
真実を求めて。
Seek for the truth.
真実のことが示されるのね。
And the truth will be shown to you, stand firm in it. And you see manifestation, God's glory, everyone, and following that, please perform your work.
頭で考えていて。
And considering in your mind, and someone, and lost away. Stand firm on the scripture. And believe the scripture firmly. You see the things you couldn't see, you hear, you couldn't hear. I want to pray for the healing. If you have a sick part, please place your hand. And healing taking place at that time. I pray. And agree my prayer, and make a prayer. And two people agree together and pray. That prayer is answered, it's a scripture, so it will be fulfilled. Everyone here, everyone's sickness, someone disappointed. But expect the word, and the word of the Lord. And show that God's victory and blessing. Stand firm in that. When you do, you see the God's victory. And the center, Jesus is on the center toward Christ. Expecting Christ make a prayer. And because you don't expect, and there are many, and the sickness not heal. When we believe, and the powerful work of the Lord come out in images of that. The blood of the cross, please cover, please cover all the servant. In Jesus, each one's sickness, and the mental sickness, please heal. In the name of Jesus Christ, I order each one's, the body and spirit sickness leave. Each one's and the sickness leave. In the name of Jesus. Be healed, be healed, be healed, body and heart, be healed, be healed, be healed, be healed. And left ears, and lose the hearing ability. Someone has a heart problem, they healed. I felt God healed. Someone has a problem, the sore shoulder, sore in the lower back. And some, and acute back brace, back pain. And shoulder, the scissor, in the, you are, in the deliberate. Someone is schizophrenia, you are depression, online, you are healed. Schizophrenia, you are healed. And someone had a problem to sight, and healed. Someone had a problem, the hearing, the sight healed. You are remantis, and healed. Someone had a problem, the leg, they healed. Some. Difficult sickness. And some cannot find, and it was deliberate. And the mental disorder, mental challenge, and that one is a disease. But that was healed. And someone trouble in the stomach and belly, the healed. I declare the healed, everyone's sickness and the mental and body. In the name of Jesus, be healed. And everyone, please touch. And there are some who experience performance God's work. Please raise a hands if you deceived work of God. Shall we give thanks? Please stand up.
May the grace of the Lord Jesus Christ. Let our Father God and the fellowship of the Holy Spirit be with each one of us. Forever and ever, amen.
Please sit down.
You can be seated.
It's a time and start rain, shall we give thanks?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is the end of today's sermon. But at night, we start at seven in the atomic bomb museum hall. If you can, please come. And for those who come, we will meet again next year, February 5th next year. Shall we give thanks to God and Pastor Akimoto. Thank you.
It starts raining. Shall we clean up quickly? Thank you.